Good morning. Hafaday, the Committee on General Government Operation and Appropriation now called to order. Today is Friday, November 8th. The time now is nine o'clock. In compliance with the open government law, the notice for this public hearing will be posted on the Gua Guan Public Notice Portal, GTA TV Channel 21, Docomo Channel 117, and livestream on Guam Des De Teo YouTube, and disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, October 30th, and then on November 6th. The agenda this morning, there were supposed to be two bills. There's only going to be one, and that's, and the first one will be Bill 372-37COR, introduced by Senator Amanda Shelton, an act to appropriate 195,822 from the revenue collected in excess of the adopted revenue level in public law 37-42 as enumerated in the consolidated revenue expenditure report of September 2024 to University of Guam, and to add a new subsection D to Section 5 of the Chapter 1, Public Law 37125, both relative to funding UOG repairs, maintenance, and capital improvement projects and accreditation related project priorities. At Disney, we were supposed to have a hearing on Bill 366-37, and this was introduced by Senator Roy Canata and co-sponsored by myself, Senator Snoggsin, Senator Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munho Barnes, an act to add a new section 22437.1 on Chapter 22 Title V Guam Code Annotating Relative to Prohibiting the Government of Guam From Passing on Fees Charged by the Credit Card Products to Collect, Paying of Taxes or Use of Government of Guam Services and to appropriate the sum of $4,710,443 to the Department of Administration for the Unappropriate and Incumbent Excess FY 2024 General Fund Revenues to Cover the Anticipated Fees for Fiscal Year 2025. However, the provisions in 366 are included within Bill 355 as substituted with the supplemental budget bill due to Bill 355. The bill is signed into public law on Wednesday, November 6th, 2024. The hearing on Bill 366 is canceled. Okay, so for the people of Guam, that second bill will not be entertained at all today. We will continue on with Bill 372-37. A fiscal note was requested on October 30th. The fiscal note was not received from the administration, but there is a fiscal note response from the Office of Finance and Budget. Those participating in Bill 372-37 are invited to the panel, and we have, let's see, four there now, okay? We have Kiana Ardente, right? We have Doreen Cusosimo, and, how are you doing? And we have Rachel Field. And who's the young lady here? Ma'am?
Laxamana.
Laxamana? You must be from where I live, in Zigu. Thank you. I recognize the last name. Anyway, moving along, the conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows. Please provide my legislative staff with any document for photocopying and distribution. Fan members are asked to remain in the room for questions or additional testimony as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum will be restricted from participating, and will be escorted and removed from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on, that you speak into the microphone. You will state your name and your title for the record. I'd ask you, if you have cell phones, put it on vibrate, if not, turn it off, just so that not everybody's trying to answer their phone when it's not their phone, okay? And with that, I'd like to recognize that I'm joined by the sponsor of the bill, Senator Vice, Senator Lizzy Secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton. Ma'am, and if you'd like to give your opening statement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair Hafaday, and good morning, everyone. First, please join me in wishing our chair a very happy birthday. Today's his birthday. I want to express my appreciation and thanks for scheduling this public hearing even on your birthday, sir, when you should be enjoying yourself. Thank you. But this is what he enjoys the most, working, so thank you so much. Bill number 372-37COR is an act to appropriate $195,822 from the revenue collected in excess of the adopted revenue level in public law 37-42 as enumerated in the consolidated revenue and expenditure report of September 2024 to the University of Guam, and to add a new subsection D to Section 5 of Chapter 1, Public Law 37-125, both relative to funding UOG repairs, maintenance, and capital improvement projects and accreditation-related priorities. Mr. Chair, as you know, Bill 372 was introduced to provide the University of Guam with critical funding, which was removed from the original FY 2025 supplemental budget bill 355 just a couple of weeks ago. Bill 372 appropriates right under $200,000 or the estimated balance of the excess FY 2024 general fund revenue that may be available after factoring in the $50 million worth of appropriation that were included in the final version of Bill 355. That measure was enacted this past Wednesday as public law 37-135. Bill 372 further amends the FY 2025 budget law by appropriating $4 million in excess general fund collections to the University of Guam. The bill requires that if income and business privileged tax revenue collections exceed the levels that were adopted for FY 2025, $4 million would be set aside for UOG for repairs, maintenance, capital improvement projects, accreditation-related priorities, including the purchase of the furniture for the Schools of Health and Engineering, WEary, and the Student Success Center. As drafted, Bill 372 mirrors the same approach. This and previous legislatures have taken prioritizing excess tax collections to address flood mitigation measures and improve our public roadways, highways, roads, and streets. The difference with Bill 372, however, is that we identify the specific amount of $4 million, or right under half of the funding UOG has stated it needs, to address a long list of Priority 1 preventative maintenance, replacement cycle investments, and new projects. Mr. Chair, as of January 2024, UOG identified $8.3 million worth of Priority 1 capital improvement projects, including but not limited to roof repair and painting, campus-wide lighting, window replacements, asbestos removal, and fire alarm systems. Another $8.8 million covering Priority 2 through Priority 4 projects include but are not limited to replacement of generators, water and sewer pipe repair, and replacement installation of new fire hydrants and elevator lift replacements. Bill 372 is offered to help UOG address a portion of its CIP needs through the use of excess FY 2024 and FY 2025 general fund revenue. Approving this bill, including any amendments that may be needed to strengthen this measure and move forward, will provide the critical funding that UOG students have asked this legislature to consider in light of the final outcome of Bill 355. According to UOG students who have reached out to all senators recently on this matter, if restored, the $4 million appropriation which was removed from Bill 355 would directly address urgent needs, including accreditation efforts and the infrastructure necessary for the Schools of Health and Engineering to continue training skilled professionals for Guam's growing workforce. Students fear there is a legitimate growing concern that if this funding is not restored, UOG may be forced to raise tuition by 10%, and the increase would drive up the cost of education, putting an even greater burden on students and families, especially those who are already struggling to afford higher education. And with that, Mr. Chair, and in our broader commitment to supporting Guam's only public university, I look forward to working with the Budget Committee and our colleagues to include any amendments that may be needed to ensure the appropriations in Bill 372 are viable and that they are made available to UOG in a timely manner. Sidois maasi, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everyone who's here today.
Thank you, Senator Amanda. I would also recognize Mr. Edward Byrne from the Department of Administration. Thank you for joining us this morning.
Good morning, Senator.
We'll start with Kiana. We'll begin with you, and coincidentally, Julie Laxamana is right next to you, so she'll follow, and then we'll go to Doreen, okay? So just so we can complete the student part, okay? All right, please begin.
Buenos en Hafaday, my name is Kiana Ardiente, and I serve as the 63rd Student Government Association Vice President. I eat, pray, love, try to. I love UOG so much, and I'm also a veteran, and I also come from a low-income household. So, as I was writing this, I was forced to confront a painful question. Are we, as the only institution of higher learning in our region, truly valued at just $4 million? Is our university's worth measured by just the sum of $195,000? I am here to tell you that although we are grateful for the $195,000, I believe we deserve more, and it is our responsibility to fight for the funding that will allow our students to continue to thrive. Roof leaks, faulty air conditioning systems, and deferred maintenance projects, these should not be the concerns of students. They deserve to focus on their studies, not wonder if the ceiling will collapse or if the AC works in their classrooms. It's appalling that I'm again voicing the same pleas I made in my last testimony, only to be met with silence and a $4 million cut. Yet, the University of Guam has consistently provided thorough and transparent budget breakdowns, and it is our hope that you will take these into consideration and provide the necessary funding to address these critical issues. Anything less is a disservice to the students and a betrayal of their trust. But this isn't just about money. It's about the value we place on education. It's about the message we send to our students and what the University of Guam can offer for the generations to come. Do we believe that every student deserves access to quality education regardless of their background or socioeconomic status? Or do we believe only those who can afford it deserve the best? While I'm fortunate to have my education covered, my heart goes out to my peers who are struggling to make ends meet. Those who cannot afford the soaring cost of tuition, who fall just short of qualifying for financial aid, or who are forced to work multiple jobs and just to take a few classes. Is this truly the cost of knowledge? It's not just the affordability of college that's at stake here. These cuts will also have a ripple effect on our programs, threatening to eliminate the very courses that make our university unique. And what about our dedicated professors who have worked tirelessly to earn the degrees and educate us? They deserve a raise, not a salary freeze. The University of Guam is already struggling to attract and retain professors in certain programs. How can we expect to provide a quality education when we can't even provide for our own faculty? I have a dream for my university, where every student can thrive in their classes, where every dorm resident can enjoy modern and comfortable facilities, and all athletic programs restored for our student athletes. I believe in the University of Guam, and I know that together, we can make a place where every student can succeed. So I ask you, do you believe in UOG? On October 29, 2024, students at the University of Guam took a stand and organized a rally in front of the Congress Building. Some people have made comments of whether or not we understood how the budget process works. But let me set the record straight. We know exactly how it works, and more importantly, we know exactly how it impacts our university, its faculty, its staff, and most importantly, the students. While we're grateful for the support from some senators, we were shocked to hear from two of them at the University of Guam that the University of Guam isn't a priority. My question is, have we ever truly been a priority in the eyes of our leaders? And when can we expect to be treated as one? We've heard many proposals on how to retain talent on Guam, and many of you emphasize the importance of prioritizing education. Let's start with the basics. The University of Guam has always produced exceptional leaders, from respected military officers to medical professionals, educators, entrepreneurs, and even some of the politicians today. Our alumni have proven themselves time and time again. So maybe, UOG should be in at least your matter of priorities. I must also express my surprise and disappointment at some of the questions that were asked by the senators after our rally. Specifically, the inquiry about the UOG Endowment Foundation's budget and the comment about $10 million just floating around. That demonstrates a lack of understanding of the foundation's purpose and scope. Furthermore, as a student myself, I'm well aware that the donations received by the UOG Endowment Foundation are earmarked specifically for scholarships, and it's disappointing to see such misconceptions perpetuated. Now that the election season has come to a close, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate each of you on your hard-won victories. But let us not forget the unfinished business that lies before us. Will you continue to prioritize politics over people, or will you finally take concrete action to support our students and faculty? Before I end, I would like to extend my sincerest gratitude to Senator Amanda Shelton for her unwavering support in our fight for $4 million through this measure. We are also thankful for her leadership on this issue. I would also like to extend my appreciation to Senator Snoggsin for his efforts in exploring alternative funding sources to support our university. This forward-thinking and commitment to finding solutions is exactly what we need to ensure the University of Guam's continued success. I hope that the gravity of this situation is not lost on us. The University of Guam's needs are well documented and evident. Rather than reiterating the specific requirements, I want to emphasize that what we truly need is your commitment and support. Sidois maasi, kiriso zapur, kemisulang, salamat kamagar kulo, kalangan, and thank you.
Thank you. Before you begin, Julie, I'd like to recognize Senator Roy Canata has joined us this morning.
Thank you. Please bear with me as I sound very sick today, but Buenos en Hafaday, senators on the floor, it's nice seeing you again, especially to Senator Canata, who has actually made an appearance at a rally a week ago. My name is Julie Laxamana, and I've been a student at the University of Guam for nearly four years now. And while I serve as a student voice on the Board of Regents, I'm here today to share my journey as a student and how UOG has impacted me. So before I attended the university, I actually went to Simon Sanchez High School, which, as we know now, no longer has its own facility. And so, for a long time, I didn't think much about education as my priority because I spent much time wondering if I'd get to walk across the stage with my peers in the new building that we were promised beyond and during the four years I spent there. And just like many others in my university, I was a public school kid. It was there, it was free, it was required, actually. And in 2021, I came to the University of Guam because my parents wanted me to, and also because I had the merit scholarship, just like the other demographics in my university. Looking back at it now, I have no regrets about investing in higher education, even if it started with a "just because I was told to." The University of Guam had changed me in many different ways I never thought was possible, as I'm sure is true for the 2.9K students enrolled here. And like any typical student, I came to UOG seeking change, and I'm leaving with a clear sense of purpose, thanks to the wisdom and support of the dedicated faculty and staff who put in countless hours for students like me. I'd often drop into their offices with some kind of crazy idea, and they'd always respond with the same crazy enthusiasm and support. And so, one day, I walked into my mentor's office with the craziest idea. I said, "I wanted to make a difference on a national level, or be involved, like to put Guam on the map, some way, shape, or form on the national level." And so, the craziest thing happened. And over the summer, I had the privilege to work at the White House under the Biden-Harris administration while I received a Congressional Gold Medal. And it sounds like a lot, and it's such a true honor to say that, but I could only say that because I had the incredible support from my community. And through this community, I found a sense of belonging in my purpose, which is to give back to our island. And like many of you who are UOG alumni and have done amazing things for our island, I want to use my passion to make a difference here on Guam. So when you vote on measures affecting UOG, you impact students who come from similar beginnings to mine and limit the potential they could have reached if they had more resources. I'm feeling a little bit of deja vu here because last fiscal year, I also came out to testify for the university's 42 million request. And so, coming out here, I'm testifying so that future students don't have to worry about their leaders, if the leaders truly care about our futures. And when you choose to support UOG, you're investing in the next generation of talented, competent professionals for Guam and beyond. And so, from our last rally, like Vice President Kiana Ardiente said over here, she did address a lot of it, which I'm just going to reiterate because I would like to put that on the record and to have these discussions for clarity. A few senators were questioning a few of the processes at UOG, so I'd like to clarify it. So, number one, UOG faculty and staff salaries are public, and they can be easily accessed with a simple search, but if you were to compare it to a normal small-town college nationwide, I chose Oberlin College from Ohio because they have the same enrolled students, which is roughly 2.9. The highest salary is 546K, and that is for their president. In comparison, our president makes 250K. The facts still remains true, just like everyone else, they are underpaid in their positions. And if that is true throughout the island of Guam, then I'm curious as to why it is something constantly brought up when we discuss our budget. And to justify the price point even further, the faculty and staff at the university must be experts in their field, often published or with a doctorate, or to be tenured even to even work there. We pay for the quality. Second, the UOG Endowment Foundation is a separate entity created to encourage donations for scholarships and professional development. Its funds are earmarked and restricted for those purposes, and UOG's primary funding sources still remain as the federal grants, tuition, and local funds. So no, there is no just random $10 million floating around unused. And lastly, there's a claim that UOG has received the same funding since, you know, if you've worked here or you've graduated here, and it's a claim so flawed because that figure doesn't account for today's inflation. If it was adjusted for today's cost, the university should have been receiving significantly more. And with this, I fully support Bill 372-37, and I'm deeply grateful to Senator Shelton for championing our request for $4 million through this measure by allocating the 195K and few other millions through FY 25's revenue, and to Senator Snoggsin for exploring alternative funding sources. And to our other senators like Tina Rose Munho Barnes and Senator Roy Canata, who continually support UOG, we thank you for your trust and support. Sidois maasi.
Thank you, Ms. Laxamana. Dr. Doreen, ma'am?
Hello. Hello? Okay. Hafaday Chairperson, Senator Amanda Shelton, and the Honorable Senators Snoggsin and Canata. My name is Doreen Cusosimo Munha. I'm a full-time accounting faculty member at the University of Guam and currently serve as a Vice President of the 24th Faculty Senate. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in strong support of the University of Guam's appropriation. These funds will enable the university to make critical updates to essential facilities, including the Schools of Health and Engineering, WEary, and the Student Success Center. This will allow us to better serve our students and the wider community. As Guam's only public university, we play a vital role in educating future leaders, advancing research, and driving regional economic development. For the past five years, the university's capital assets condition had an average or has an average remaining useful life of 50%. This indicates a need for upgrades and replacement very soon to maintain a safe, functional, and inspiring spaces for learning. The university's mission requires a routine repairs and maintenance and capital improvements that enhance the quality and the capability of our facilities. Capital improvements are essential for several reasons. They keep our facilities up to date, compliant with regulatory standards, and responsive to educational demands. Updated, well-equipped spaces are very important for delivering the hands-on learning experience that prepare our students to be competitive in their fields. Most importantly, capital improvements reduce long-term operational costs through energy-efficient upgrades, structural repairs, and modernized infrastructure. These improvements enhance safety and functionality, lower utilities expense, and minimize the need for costly emergency repairs. Accreditation standard also requires us to maintain well-kept facilities. Compliance with these standards is critical for safeguarding the university's accreditation, which in turn protects the value of our students' degrees and upholds the university's national and international credibility. These appropriations will allow the university to address accreditation-related priorities, improve our students' learning environment, and help us remain in good standing with accreditating bodies. The Nursing Annex Building is more than just a learning space. It is a hub for practical, hands-on training that equips students with the skills they need in real-world environments. Students will have access to state-of-the-art laboratories and simulation room to practice procedures, diagnostics, and patient care skills. Given the growing demand for healthcare professionals in Guam, this facility will help our students graduate with the experience and training to serve our island's communities effectively. The Engineering Building, this will provide access to advanced equipment and dedicated lab spaces where students can learn and work on projects. Given Guam's geographical and environmental challenges, training our future engineers to address the region's infrastructure and sustainability need is crucial. A fully equipped facility will empower students to design, build, and implement solutions to enhance our island's infrastructure and drive long-term development. WEary is a key component of the university's research mission. Its work is needed to sustainable water resource management and environmental resilience in Guam and the Pacific region. Investing in the WEary's facilities and equipment supports research directly impacting the Guam's ecological health and trains the next generation of professionals in this much-needed field. The Student Success Center is another critical space that provides students with tutoring, advising, and career development services. These services nurture students' retention, academic achievement, and career readiness. Capital improvements through the center will ensure a welcoming, effective environment that meets our students' needs and support them as they strive academically and professionally. I would also like to request an amendment to this bill to add $12,500 for a digital syllabus software that will enhance the communication between the students, faculty, and administrators at UOG. In closing, these appropriations will improve the university's capital assets condition that represents a strategic investment in the university and the long-term growth of our community. Investing in the university's infrastructure today lays the foundation for a greater economic and social impact in our future. I respectfully request your support on these appropriations. Thank you for your consideration and your commitment into investing in the Guam's future. Sidois maasi.
Thank you, Doreen. Ms. Rachel? And you'll be followed by Doc Ed Byrne, and then the two students, okay?
Thank you, thank you very much. Buenos en Haf... Sorry, good morning. My name is Rachel Field. I'm the University of Guam's Acting Vice President of Administration and Finance, and I'm also the university's Budget Officer, so this topic is definitely right up my alley. Thank you so much for having us here and also just the opportunity to speak in support of this bill. So, buenos en hafa de, honorable members of the 37th Guam Legislature. On behalf of the University of Guam, I express our strong support for Bill 372-37, which proposes an allocation of $195,822 from FY 2024 excess revenues and $4 million from projected FY 2025 excess revenues. These funds are critical to addressing the university's pressing infrastructure needs, including essential repairs, maintenance, capital improvements, accreditation initiatives, and new facility requirements. The proposed appropriation in Bill 372-37 would enable UOG to address several urgent priorities from our comprehensive maintenance and capital improvement plan. Our current deferred maintenance requirements total $16 million, as detailed in our annual prioritized submission to the legislature, which has mainly remained unfunded. Upon approval of this appropriation, we will immediately execute high-impact projects, including critical campus-wide roof repairs and the implementation of a voice-over Internet protocol system, initiatives that will enhance campus safety, improve communication efficiency, and generate long-term utility cost savings. The proposed funding would also ensure our newest facilities are equipped to serve students from day one. UOG stands at a critical moment with our campus expanding through four landmark facilities anticipated for completion in 2025: the Dr. Lucio C. Tan Student Success Center, the School of Engineering Building, the Margaret Hattori Uchima School of Health Nursing Annex, and the Water and Environmental Research Institute Building. Rising construction costs have created a funding gap for essential fixtures, furniture, and equipment, which this funding would help bridge, allowing these state-of-the-art facilities to immediately serve our students, faculty, and community. These funds would also accelerate our progress on key initiatives identified in our recent accreditation review. Our reaffirmation of accreditation from the Western Association of Schools and Colleges Senior College and Universities Commission validates UOG's unwavering commitment to academic excellence and student success. The accreditation process identified strategic growth opportunities, particularly in student services and online learning. This funding will support these vital improvements, ensuring UOG maintains its position as a leading institution of higher education in the Pacific, in the Western Pacific. During the FY 2025 budget cycle, UOG submitted a general operations budget request of $44.9 million, but received an allocation of $34.2, a $10.7 million shortfall from our requests. Furthermore, the appropriation of $1.6 million to the Guam Cultural Repository has placed additional constraints on our operational capacity. While we sincerely appreciate the legislature's consistent support and this proposed appropriation from Bill 372-37, it's important to note that these funds would only partially address our anticipated 2025 budget deficit. As good stewards of public resources, UOG maintains an unwavering commitment to fiscal responsibility and maximizing the impact of every dollar invested in higher education. We look forward to continuing our collaborative partnership with the Guam Legislature to secure sustainable funding solutions that support the university's essential operations, statutory requirements, and our mission of Ina Disco Bresse P. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of Bill 372-37. Your support is crucial as we secure the resources necessary to advance Guam's educational and economic future and drive positive lasting change throughout Micronesia. Sizou Smasi. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burton, sir?
Good morning, and thank you, Senator. My own student days are long enough ago for me, I think, to comfortably be called an antique. But I do remember making my way through wintry rains from one building to another. Some of them were temporary buildings in order to further my own education. So I understand some of the comments that are being made here today. It's certainly a matter of pride to me that the prudent fiscal approach that the administration and the legislature have taken enables DOA to transfer to UOG their appropriation on time, in full, each week. So that, over the last four years, that has certainly been a pride to me and to my staff, that they're able to do that timely. My comments really aren't related to the need for the funds or what the funds are going to be used for. I certainly would encourage UOG to work with the administration on maximizing federal funding, and we're certainly ready to stand and help the university with whatever we can do to get funds from our federal counterparts who also are committed to support education. My comments basically are on how we fund this. And as has been pointed out, this funding was omitted from Bill 355. The wording in this bill, as currently drafted, is "for revenues collected." And I'm trying to imagine how we were going to deal with that on a daily and weekly basis because I understand that the university wants an appropriation so that they can commit these funds, they can issue purchase orders. But that's kind of challenged by the wording of "collected." So I would like, obviously, to work with the Budget Committee on that. I would also point out that Bill 236, which is now Public Law 37-125, actually contains some other overriding appropriations. And that all, in one part, it mentions that all funds collected in excess of revenue levels are appropriated to DPW. And also, there's another provision right at the end of the Act that says that $9 million collected in excess of adopted levels are appropriated to the Tramuro Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund. So I will certainly work with the Budget Committee to resolve some of these issues, which are confusing in the Act and don't help progress the funding for this particular purpose. Just a personal word about students, if I may. I'm well aware that UOG students are the wellspring for the future of the civil service of the government. And we obviously want to provide conditions that we can staff the civil service over the next 50, in my case, or 100 years, with qualified students dedicated to public service. We have had some student interns at DOA, but I would like to make this a more regular practice and that the academic part of their qualifications and the practical part of their qualifications are better meshed together. And I would certainly like to, we have spoken to UOG about this, but I would like to re-energize that conversation and get that process underway. As I said, my comments aren't really related to the use of these funds. There does appear to be a need for use. All our agencies compete with one another for funds. The need for infrastructure throughout the island is clear. Senators will have to decide whether this is a priority, like the student next to me mentioned. But since they're here in front of you, please listen to them and make up your minds for yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Now we'll begin with... We have a Brian, and we have a, is that Nisi or Nicole? Nicole, right? Okay, I want to begin with you. I'll let him be last. All right. Thank you, Nicole.
Buenos en hafa de, honorable senators of the 37th Guam Legislature. My name is Nicole Guerrero. I serve as the President of UOG's 63rd Student Government Association. My testimony today reflects my utmost support for Bill Number 372-37, which I believe will greatly assist in UOG's current budget shortfall for fiscal year 2025 and address longtime deferred projects at the university. For years, the students at the University of Guam have been acutely aware of the financial struggle the university faces, given the continued decline in budget appropriations by our government. Largely, the students' awareness comes from the fact that this decline in budget appropriation has directly led to consequences for our own students as the university tries its best to manage what it has been given. This has led to deferment of critical repairs and maintenance at the university, including those that resulted from Taifun Mawar, delays in hiring much-needed faculty and staff, and a reevaluation of certain programs and activities offered at the university. This fiscal year, UOG was appropriated $10 million less than our requested budget. Most recently, the passage of the Supplemental Budget Bill 355-37 removed $4 million that would have gone towards funding the university and coping with the initial $10 million deficit. Less than a week after the removal of the $4 million from the supplemental bill that was passed, our students held a rally here at the Guam Congress Building to express our disappointment and call for the much-needed additional funding for our university. Since then, I have received questions, including from some of our own senators, to the degree of, "Why are students fighting their university's battles, and where is our administration in all of this?" I hope you can agree with me when I say that students should not have to constantly worry about the financial situation of our university, nor should they be concerned that the repairs and maintenances of their campus has gone unaddressed. Yet our students have consistently and constantly shown up and advocated for our university, not because our administration has prompted us to, but because we are smart enough to recognize that the current financial situation of UOG is not just an administration-level problem. It doesn't just affect our faculty and our staff. Instead, these are consequences for each and every student that attends the University of Guam and calls themselves a Triton. The shortfall in UOG's budget means that students' educational experiences will be directly impacted as the university looks to reduced academic offerings, scaling down student support services, and a potential raising of tuition and fees, all to keep basic operations afloat. These are decisions no one at the university wants to make, but without legislative support, UOG is left with no other option. This is why Bill Number 372-37 is crucial for our university and our students. I have heard time and time again from our leaders that the youth and our students are the future of our island. Well, we're here today, and we're asking our legislatures to pay attention to us, to show up for us, and to listen to us. The University of Guam is a cornerstone of our island's community. It is a place of innovation and progress. It is this island's future. This bill doesn't just mean funding the University of Guam. It means supporting our island's future. It means showing our students and the youth that they matter in this island, that they are also a priority. Which is why I greatly urge the passage of Bill Number 372-37. Please show the youth that they are also a priority on this island. Sizou Smasi.
Thank you, Nicole. Mr. Brian?
You're it.
Teste no de. Good morning, Hafa Daye senators. My name is Brian Teodolcho, and I am a third-year student at the University of Guam, and I also serve as the Public Relations Officer of the 63rd Student Government Association. Today, I am here to stand in support of Bill Number 372-37 and act to fund repairs, maintenance, capital improvement projects, and accreditation priorities for the University of Guam. When I learned that the $4 million that UOG was promised was cut out of the Supplemental Funding Bill Number 355-37, I was not surprised. I have seen it time and time again, how our leaders continue to put education at the back burner of their priorities. Not too long ago, I was attending Simon Sanchez High School, a campus that was so faulty that it affected my academic experience and is currently closed and without a campus of its own because we have waited too long to address the need for a newly-built campus. Now, as a student of the University of Guam, it is the same story. Obviously, not as severe, but there are still repairs and maintenance that need to take priority. And the difference here right now is that I am paying for this education. I believe that I can speak for every student here that it is a struggle to pay off our tuition and our student fees. We have students that are working part-time jobs, students who are taking out student loans, which includes myself. Higher education is important, and we want to keep people here on this island to work and pursue their careers for the betterment of Guam. But we still wonder why people are choosing to leave the island because we are not giving them a good reason to stay. Every year, the University of Guam falls short on their budget requests, and that could have gone towards initiatives that would propel the university forward and improve our operations so more students are inclined to go here. So that is why I wholeheartedly believe that this funding is a step in the right direction for our university. And it's also something for our newer senators for the next term to take into consideration as well going into the next fiscal year. I want to commend Senator Shelton for always supporting our UOG community and for making us feel heard, as well as Senator Canata and Senator San Augustin for doing their part too to contribute and help our students. So that's why I urge all the senators and all the senators that are watching here today to please support this bill, to not only invest in our university, but invest in the students and the future generation that could potentially leave this island. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you all today, and I hope you have a blessed day. Sizou Smasi.
Thank you, Brian. I'll begin, there's any question from Senator Roy? Do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I don't. I just wanted to thank you guys for your coming out and, you know, providing your testimony. Very much appreciative of the younger generation coming out here and participating in the legislative process, most especially to the University of Guam team. I wish I could support this legislation if we have it out before the end of the term. But it is my hope that we will support any other initiative moving forward in the new term. I just thank you guys for the opportunity to be here, and most especially wishing you all the best in your endeavors. Thank you so much again for all your hard work. Take care.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Amanda, ma'am?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions for the panel. I think we've been over this time and time again every year with the Budget Act, with the Supplemental Budget just a few weeks ago. We know what the needs are at the University of Guam and how this money will be used. And I want to thank, of course, the students, the administration, the faculty, staff for being here today to once again reiterate to the senators how important this is and how we should make this a priority. It's like deja vu, right? You've been here, students, over and over again to advocate for the University of Guam, and we appreciate your time and your efforts when you should be in class or focus on your studies or work-study, whatever it is that you're doing, instead of here in front of us in the legislature. But it's this engagement and this process that reminds us what our priorities should be. So we appreciate it. And I do really appreciate your testimony, Vice President Kiana, and others who mentioned about the Endowment Foundation because we have senators here in the body who think that we should be able to supplement all of the university's needs with the Endowment Foundation, not understanding how the Endowment Foundation works and how these monies that are donated to the foundation are for specific scholarships or other uses, whatever it is that donor may want it to be used for, not for our capital improvements or not directly to fix an air conditioning or an elevator, things that really make the whole student experience what it should be. We talk about wanting to keep our students here at home at the University of Guam, providing them the best quality education. And all of these little things, they seem little, but if you're not able to go to class, or you can't trust your air conditioner, or maybe someone with a disability can't get to their class on the second or the third floor of a building, well, first of all, it's against the law, but it also, you know, impacts the quality of education that they receive. So we want to be able to make sure that we are compliant with all laws, that we are providing the highest standard of education here at our university, that we, as lawmakers, can be proud of and that our students can be proud of and our community can be proud of. Because you're right, we are producing all of these leaders throughout our community, throughout the region. And we sit up here as alumni of the university, and we want the university to have the very best. And so, Mr. Chair, I want to thank you because as soon as I introduced this bill, he called me up and he said, "Yes, we're going to support it. We're going to move it right away." That's why he gave us this date so quickly. And he wants to give the University of Guam what is due to the University of Guam. Of course, we don't want to say we're always going to, you know, give money every time there's a problem. there's a problem, but we understand, being here as the chair for the last six years, him being the Chair of the Office of Finance and Budget, that we have not always been able to give the University of Guam everything that it's needed, because there are other priorities in the government, but we are also providing tools to the university to be able to make those revenues on their own, to be able to be innovative and creative by changing the charter so that we can make more money and provide a better atmosphere, a better education for our students. So we hope that hand-in-hand with the money that we can provide, as well as with the tools to make more money on its own, to be more independent, that our only public university for all of us is going to be able to thrive and be this shining star for the region. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Amanda. I'd like to first start out with number one, yeah, I'm an alumni, I started in the University of Guam in 1975. Some of you probably weren't even born yet, and for some folks like my, now and my cousin out here, they were there also in seventy-five. And back then, the school, the university was free to us in for the first two years, okay? Now, the amendment in the supplemental or in the budget was introduced by myself, supported by Senator Amanda, and I don't, I didn't understand why. I wasn't here, but I didn't understand why, because I was on the Patty Roy Show saying everything on the supplemental could be, could be covered. But exactly like what the students said, why don't you use the foundation? Ah, do you know what you're talking about, senators? That's the problem we have, okay? But let's face it, this, we're at a point where we're, if it's not entertained by December, I can promise you something, I told already Senator Amanda, when we amend the bill, that'll be one of my first bills I'm going to introduce in January. I'm not going to be the majority, but I'm going to introduce it, then you can see what the commitment was for the folks that won, okay? You can see that yourself, because I'll tell you what, the end of the election is the beginning of the new process of being re-elected. A lot of people think that, no, it is. On November 6th, every one of us that got re-elected, we're already campaigning to stay in office in two years from now. And for the students like yourself from Simon Sanchez, Senator Canata has been fighting for Simon Sanchez. I've been fighting for Simon Sanchez when I was on the Board of Education, and I'm still fighting for it. All right, and, and, and you know, I've been, I've reached out to, for Rachel, I reached out to your president, we're looking at other ways to provide funding to the University of Guam. I think there's a possible tax credit, I'll introduce that once I get the verbiage, okay? And if it's not this, you know, I'm not really worried too much, because the year's ending fast, and we don't even have a scheduled session for November, we probably, hopefully have session in December to entertain this bill. And, you know, from Mr. Burton's standpoint, we're going to, I'm going to reach out to you so we can make the appropriate amendments on the bill, but understand, okay, that on the supplemental bill that was passed, that the governor vetoed, anything for 2025, and things already been taken off, so whatever comes out next week on the CRE, if there's enough for the four million, I'm going to amend the bill to reflect that, and then see if it can get passed in December, okay? We're going to figure out a way how we can do it, but it's all going to come down to the body. Just understand, the three of us will still be here until December 31st, after that, it's me and the others, okay? And I'm still going to be fighting for UOG, and I understand how the foundation's set up, but other than I mentioned the tax, possible tax credit, CRE, the president has reached out, if there was a construction company out there that says, we can do the work, but you can't pay us, but you can, if we can get a tax credit, well, why not introduce that bill for that, okay? Get a tax credit for repairs and maintenance? A lot of the businesses are in business, but they struggle at the end of their year, okay, to make payment in taxes, and Mr. Burton probably like, you want to remove that, that's tax we never, money we never received, so we just write it off before we even think of receiving it. At the same token, it was also brought to my attention by the president, consider the manpower, the way the Manpower Development Fund, right now, I think it's 70% to GC, 30 to DOL, well, let's take a look what percentage we can afford to take away from GC, because GC has gotten to that, where they're in that mode where they got used to it, we need to take a look at how we can share that, because university does produce folks that impacts the community, no different in GC, so we're just going to have to massage that, but I just ask you all, the election is over, but the election has already began for '26, for all the senators that got newly-elected and the folks that got re-elected. And please be mindful, the University of Guam and the people of Guam, the campaign is over, but the message is still the same, if it educates the party, hm, put your money where your mouth's at, because I know where my money's at. It took me fifteen years to get my degree at the University of Guam, just let you all know that, I had to change, you know, the program. But anyway, with that, there being no one else to present testimony on this bill, this hearing is now concluded. I want to thank everyone for attending this hearing and providing feedback and suggestions. Bill 372-37, public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is 9:55. Sisus Massey, and thank you, and all places be safe when you drive.